...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mandy, please call the roll.
Young.
Here.
Randor Horse, here.
Here.
Steba.
Here.
Score, here. And Hopkin, who's back?
All right. Once again, people can attend via the telephone or the Internet. So those of you, if you are on the phone, you will be able to provide verbal comments during the dedicated public forums. I would ask that you please keep your microphone or telephones on mute until the time you wish to speak. And if you want to follow along with a meeting presentation, it can be viewed at the City of Pella website. I also want to announce that we will have a policy and planning meeting will be held following approval of Abstracts Agenda Item K1 to discuss. We have several things to talk about: Convention and Visitors Bureau funding, requests from Wonderspelling to expand the Kiwanis Park improvements project scope, public measures on the fall ballot, resolutions of support for public referendums regarding local option sales and service tax in the city of Bussy, city of Meltzer Dallas, and city of Knoxville, Bossland and Conference Center repairs, Southwest sanitary sewer extension to serve Prairie Ridge Plat 3, West Washington Street, Fivefield Road intersection improvements. So can I get a motion for approval of the tentative agenda as amended to hold the policy and planning after Agenda Item K1?
So moved.
Score.
Banster, score, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
The answer?
Yes.
Score?
Young?
Yes.
Randor Horse?
Yes.
Steba.
Motion passed. Item three, I would like to reappoint David Gritters to serve another five-year term on the Building Code Board of Appeals. David was originally appointed to this board in 2012 and has attended all the meetings held since his original appointment. If approved, David's new term would expire on August 1, 2026. Can I get a motion for approval?
Support.
Skibout, Randor Horse, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Steba?
Yes.
Randor Horse?
Yes.
The answer?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item four, I'd like to reappoint Wayne Stinchard to serve another term on the Community Development Committee, better known as the CDC. Wayne has served on CDC since January 7, 2003, and has attended all of the meetings held over the past 12 months. If approved, Wayne's new three-year term would expire on August 1, 2024. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
So moved.
Randor Horse, Banster, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Randor Horse?
Yes.
The answer?
Yes.
Steba?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
I would also like to announce a closed session will be held after the consent agenda pursuant to Iowa Code Chapter 21.5, Paragraph 1C to discuss strategy with council on matters that are presently in litigation or where litigation is imminent where its disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the governmental body in that litigation. We have time for a public forum now, so anyone wishing to address counsel regarding an agenda item, if you want to do that, address anything that's on the agenda, come to the podium, please state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes. Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. Can I get a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Score.
Randor Horse, score, discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Randor Horse?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
The answer?
Yes.
Motion passed. Do I have a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Iowa Code Chapter 21.5, Paragraph 1C to discuss strategy with council on matters that are presently in litigation or where litigation is imminent where its disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the governmental body in that litigation?
So moved.
Support.
Randor Horse, discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Young?
Yes.
Randor Horse?
Yes.
The answer?
Yes.
Steba?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
All right, so we will reconvene in the chief's office for our closed session. Anyone that's listening in, after the closed session, the audio will be put back up so you can re-enter the meeting. All right, we're back, we're back in open session. I don't believe there will be any motions coming out of our closed session to consider, so we will move on. Petitions, communications. First item is a new cigarette, tobacco, nicotine vapor permit application for Steer &amp; Heiss located at 727, 727 Main Street. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I don't know if I pronounced that right or not.
Yeah, I'll give it a shot, too. Forgive me if I mispronounced the name, but as Mayor said, Steer &amp; Heiss located at 727 Main Street is applied for a new cigarette, tobacco, and nicotine vapor permit effective July 21st, July 21st of this year through June 30, 2020. It is important to note that some of these items are just associated with the traditional cigarette and tobacco permit on these additional items being in the description up here on the big board. It is important to note that the entity is proposing to sell only cigars with their business, and we also had a letter that was imposed in the council package as well describing their business plan, what they plan to sell onsite. It is important to note the chief of duty did visit with the businesses as well. From the city staff standpoint, the administrative standpoint, the application fees are in order, and they were submitted in accordance with the state of Iowa's guidelines, and we are recommending approval this evening. And with that, we'd be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor council may have on the side of the floor.
All right, thanks, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Young? Randor Horse, discussion?
I'm having trouble picturing where 727 is.
That would be...
Just south of East Marlin.
Be on that side of the street, yeah, in the middle of the block over here.
Okay.
Not sure which building it is. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Young?
Yes.
Randor Horse?
Yes.
The answer?
Yes.
Steba?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to resolutions. Resolution number 6315, Title Resolution approving an application agreement for federal assistance grant. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Background on this item, what this resolution would do, would improve an application and agreement for federal assistance under the coronavirus, state and federal local recovery funds. Now, overall, we do have a description, second bullet point up on the slide, of the overall funding that was dedicated towards local governments. Now, as far as the city of Pella, we are considering a nonentitlement in the deal with local government, and our allocation of proposed distribution is just over $1.5 million. It's very important to note this evening that the application is just added, and applications are intended to draw the funds off. We have not designated any uses of what the money could be used for, and I believe, Mandy, we do have eligible categories that have been established preliminary up here on the big board. And for those following at home, on slide number seven, on here, as you can see, is a brief description of the items that we have listed up here. These are very broadly broad categories. What our intention is, is to submit the application, notify the state we intend to draw the funds. And once we have that in place, then we will hold future policy and planning work sessions and talk about the distribution and the use of the $1.5 million for these broad categories that we have up this floor. So with this, Mr. Mayor, all we're doing this evening is just approving the application, which notifies the state that we intend to draw the funds on that. So with that, we'd be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor council may have on this item.
Thanks, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Banster? Score? Discussion?
Is there a deadline for this grant?
Yeah, Corey, I think the application is due by August 13th. What's that?
August 6.
It's coming up.
Oh, August 6, yes.
Has anybody looked at what it's going to take to be compliant with the Title VI Civil Rights Act, the 64?
We've done that with the other FAA grants, or any federal grant that we've been complying with.
Sure, we're already doing it. That's standard course of business for the city, the Civil Rights Act and federal insurances, so.
Okay, anything else? All right, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
The answer?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Randor Horse?
Yes.
Steba?
Yes.
Motion passed. Then you're on to claims, Abstract of Bill Number 2083. Can I get a motion for approval?
Looking for the insurance.
Or?
Skibout, Young, questions for Mike? Corey, discussion?
I have just one. Orion, I don't think Dole isn't here. Orion, we had like a $4,800 monthly bill.
Yes, yes.
Is our line up to Grinnell active?
Yeah.
So is that Orion, is that just the potential that we have? We pay that just for potential use of it?
Yeah, you're exactly right. Our own transport line that we own is active, that is the city's main transport line, and the best way to look at that payment is it's an insurance policy in case our line is down.
So is that just insurance? What happens if we actually use 10 gig?
That's the payment. It's there regardless if we use it.
Regardless whether we use zero or 10 gig, is that?
Right. Yeah, this is the case, you know, in case our line's cut, we want to make sure at Pella Fiber that that is a reliable service and the people have service, period. And this is our backup line, and that's the payment we're making to Orion to serve to an entirely different point than our line serves to, so we have redundancy in the system.
We have to have redundancy. I did not know the payment process, schedules.
Yes.
Thank you.
Would that go away eventually if eventually the line in Ellesville?
Yeah, that's a business decision, and that's something, you know, the best way to describe that, reliability is important. Our intention is to provide a customer-friendly, reliable service, period, at Pella Fiber. It's a business decision whether the city built its own line in the future and doesn't make a payment to another entity to provide backup service or not. We'll continue to evaluate that. But for right now, we've had, as the council knows, it's been extremely busy with Pella Fiber, but that's Dole on our plate, that analysis in the future.
Okay, anything else? All right, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Steba?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Randor Horse?
Yes.
The answer?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
Motion passed. All right, so at this time, we're going to adjourn to our policy and planning session. We have several items to discuss tonight, and we will start with the CBB funding request. So, Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to discuss this item, and this is a continuation of discussions that we had during the budget process with the Convention and Visitors Bureau at the time, and the council remembers when we were looking at it. I would say COVID-19 has been difficult for a lot of business and industry in our community and nationwide. The tourism industry was hit particularly hard. I would also state for the record, our local CBB's done an outstanding job managing their finances through the pandemic. But what we're really talking about tonight, the best way to look at it is the allocation that we're talking about tonight is for the current fiscal year that we have, and the presentation by the CBB will be for the current fiscal year. But just to recap, based off the latest 12-months of data that we received on hotel motel taxes, the key takeaway when you look at it is overall, we're just shy of $272,000 in hotel motel taxes that was received in our community. Of that, I believe we distribute right around 57% to the CBB. That was about $155,000. The city share was $117,000. And where this comes in, the reason why I'm reviewing this is, let's go ahead, Mandy, and go to the next slide. You can see the track history where we've been at over the course of the contracted hotel motel taxes and the impact that COVID-19 had on the tourism industry locally. But in essence, our 272 for fiscal year that would have ended on June 30, 2021 was less than what was in 2016 by a considerable amount. That's basically a track history. So when you look at the CBB and the allocation in 2020, which would have been the prior fiscal year, we distributed over $252,000 to the CBB, and that's their principal source of income to fund the agency that promotes tourism within our community. This last year, according to their contract, we're at 155. It is important to note, the agency also received just over $46,000 in additional federal assistance on this as well. Now, when I talk about outstanding job that the agency did during the COVID-19 pandemic, if you were to pull their balance sheet, at least the information that we had off the balance sheets on it, and look at their cash accounts on it, they actually increased their cash reserves comparatively to speaking in 2020. So they've made several adjustments to survive the COVID-19 pandemic. And again, I think, personally think they've done an outstanding job through the pandemic. What we're here to talk about tonight is it's our understanding that the CBB will be asking for an additional $40,000 in this fiscal year, and this will help them get through the rest of the fiscal year. Tourism industry, we believe, while it's not going to full recovery, it's on its way back here. Based on our analysis, when we look at this current fiscal year that ends on June 30, 2022, we believe that you could reasonably say $40,000 could be justified. Now, what we want to talk about is the big picture, is their current contract expires, I believe, in March 31, 2022. You could look at this as additionally, you could look at it to here and now, where they've been, where we think we're going, and consider their $40,000 and look at that. Or you could look at their additional request and say, we want to look at a big picture and particularly look at as a part of a contract renewal as well. From our standpoint, A, we think the request is reasonable under the circumstances for this year. If that is the case, and council wants to just address this year, we can have a contract amendment in early in August, particularly either the first or the second meeting on it. If you would like to consider this request as a part of a contract renewal, we'd like to know that upfront as in dealing with the CBB. So, Mayor, what we're here to talk about tonight is we'd be happy to answer any questions regarding the CBB, their request, financial, the current contract on that. Ultimately, we're looking for direction from the city council, whether we want to take action on their immediate request that's in front of us, or whether we want to also consider that as a part of a contract renewal. So before we turn the floor over to Ms. Yule and the board, does Mayor Council have any questions for us?
Will that put a strain on them to, if we do not provide the $40,000 on the budget now? What's your thoughts? Or maybe I'd be a question for Jill.
Yeah, I'd prefer if Yule answered that question rather than taking a shot at that. So that would probably be a question for the CBB, so.
I would think that the loss and... Mandy, can you go back to the table? The, so in 2020, we had 442,000 total, now 271, 942. I would certainly think that that difference would be, could be part of the $1.5 million federal money, because part of that is to make up for lost revenues during COVID. So I'm sure, I'm sure we can, I guess I shouldn't say I'm sure, but I would assume that we would be able to make up for lost, that lost revenue through that. So, yeah, and I'm, yeah, I would be interested in hearing what, you know, what the CBB has to say about the immediacy of the $40,000 need.
Floor's yours.
Okay.
It was six months ago, I think, we met last time. It was in the middle of the Dark Ages, days were shorter, and in the hospitality industry, that's the slow season in Pella. I call it the Dark Ages because it's barely worth turning the lights on during that season. And that was especially true after COVID-19. We even had some hotels that closed down for periods of time. And as, as the city staff and as our CBB, we looked into our crystal balls, trying to figure out what our budget should look like in this unusual year. And we presented three levels of support that we thought we might need at that time. There was a top shelf, there was a middle, and then there was the survival mode. And you sent us back to the drawing board to sharpen our pencils, and I think that we did that this year, definitely with the actions that we've taken. And that turned out to be a wise decision to wait and see what else was in store, what we could do to help ourselves and get the help that we needed, which was available under a new administration. So one of the things, Jill kind of became the Lone Ranger in the CBB shop. The part-time help was basically turned off to a trickle, if that. Nobody was moving in town, nobody was coming to town. So our focus shifted from outside communities and bringing in the overnight guests to internal, and we took some initiatives to do that. We printed 65 credit cards, gift cards, and if you engaged in our social media, we sent you one of those, and you were able to win prizes and bring what business we could into town and keep it local. There were cuts that were out there. Instead of recycling 30,000 of our visitors' guides that we print every year, we're rolling those over into this season with a new sticker on the front of them. And we just didn't think it was fair to go to businesses that were also hurt by COVID-19 to ask them to discard last year's contribution and kick in again. So that was a savings of over $20,000 there. We went back to all of our partnerships, which were hurting in the same ways that we were, and we asked, how can we work together? How can we leverage each other? And we did that. And we also applied for those grants that were out there. So we're happy to say that the CBB applied for PPE and the CARES App dollars, and we received a total of $46,500 of federal incentive and help for that. Next slide, please.
Okay, so as Rob alluded to, we do always, and we will continue to always, work in partnerships. So on the board, you'll see a number of our partners. I'm not going to go through each and every one of them, but just highlight a few on down, like the Christmas, annual Christmas brochure. That's a brochure that the CBB designs, prints, circulates, but we invite all partners within the community, any entity that has any type of Christmas activity that they host or anything at all, to be a part of that for no fee. So we want to make sure that people come to Pella with all these ideas in mind of all these things they can do, and they can stay longer, they can do more, spend more dollars. So that is a partnership with the entire community. The new Pella map, which I just passed down the line here to, to the council, was an idea that was brought to us by our retailers, and it's proven to be a very usable tool. We printed 5,000 poppies and distributed those the first week of May. We are completely out of these maps, other than what you have in your hands right now, so treat them like they're gold.
We'll give them that.
Okay, that's great. Good plan, thanks, Mayor. So we are in need of printing those again immediately, but as we all know, things change in Pella a lot. We have new, we have new businesses coming in, we have a couple that have chosen to leave and that type of thing, so they'll need updating and reprinting as soon as possible. The hospitality apprenticeship at the Career Academy is something that we, as a board, want to get greatly involved in. We have a lot of hospitality needs in a tourism community, and a lot of our facilities, whether it's restaurants or hotels, they're struggling for help, and we need to get people back into our industry and working in partnership with us. So we felt it would be adamant for us to go ahead and work specifically in, for us in the hotel hospitality program and help with recruiting young people to get involved in a career path for tourism, and then keeping them, obviously, as local residents in our own community and working at our own facilities. So that's something that we're looking forward to getting much more involved with. The Bloom Fest, and I hate to bring this up, because this partnership started 11 years ago. A gentleman walked into my office and asked if I'd be at all interested in doing something like this, and so forth and so on. And 11 years later, we've had an extremely successful, until this year, and I think the mayor jinxed that, because you gave me a, yeah, you gave me a path of flight we were supposed to follow, but that didn't happen, because we didn't get to fly at all. But 11 years ago, it was a partnership between the CBB, the Red Rock Lake Association, and Army Corps of Engineers, as well as some partners in the Knoxville area, and it's been greatly successful. Our hotels are full, the campgrounds are completely full. It brings a huge economic impact to our community. And then lastly, you'll notice here is the Kier Smart Christmas Market. The Christmas market has been a research and plan of the CBBS for now six years. Why do we want to roll it out this year? Because we feel this is a perfect year to add a new attraction, to find another focus and another interest for people to come to Pella at Christmas. It just seems like the right year to make it happen. So the market will be solely organized and operated by the Convention and Visitors Bureau. We have a letter of intent that we received last week from the New Spirit of Pella organization in hopes of receiving some funding specifically for the building of the huts for the Christmas market. So that's where we are with a lot of our partnerships. That's just naming a few, so go ahead, Mandy. So we kind of, this will help with your question and so forth a little bit, Bruce, but we have a number of expenses that we replaced right back into our 2021 budget that we knew we were going to have and that type of thing. But the lower graph shows a lot of those expenses that were not scheduled in our budget and that we are going to need some support on for the rest of the year. These, and when I say the rest of the year, we work on a calendar year. So these are expenses that we will be incurring for the rest of this year, so through the end of December. As I mentioned, the reprint of the Pella map, and also, we have hired freelance, our past graphic designer that moved away, we have hired her freelance. So we didn't really figure that into our budget for this year, but we need support on getting tasks done that have been put off, like the visitors' guide. So we're needing help with getting caught up on these things. And then just bottom line, bringing back a third person. We're a one full-time person and one part-time person right now. If we can get that second part-time person back in place and just get caught up with everything that we normally do out of our, out of our office to market Pella as a tourism destination. And then, many of you know, well, the council knows, but we will have some overlap with expenses in the process of our hiring process of our new director, and then the training process of keeping myself on, as well as a new director, as we transition that process as well. And then, we are, we were selected to host the Iowa Economic Development Authority Downtown Conference. That was a very extensive bid, probably compared to Radbride bid, it was one of the most extensive bids I've ever submitted. But we are, we were selected after, I think they received 13 bids, and Pella was selected to host next year, so that's been a few expenses along the way to prepare for that and so forth as well. And then finally, the Kier Smart. We'll have a number of additional expenses beyond the hopeful money that we'll be getting through Spirit of Pella for the huts, but there'll be a number of other expenses incurred, and we have a lot of fun things planned for that. It will be located right on the Mullin Rock Canal. The Kier Smart will only host merchants that have crafts that are outside of what we offer in our downtown district. We want to make sure that we're complementing our retailers and bringing more people in to shop their brick and mortar stores by having different items and that type of thing that can't be found at our retailers downtown. So if you look at the total of those outside the budget total, or the outside budget expenses, the total is roughly $40,000. So as you mentioned, Mike, that is what we are asking for support in the losses over the, over the year from COVID and the tourism dollars coming in. And since we are funded by hotel motel tax, some of our hotels actually have been closed for timeframes because there was no visitors to stay at them. So we did really struggle and worked hard to make it work, and if we had the support to get through just the end of the year with some of these expenses that were not planned but yet, or were postponed and that type of thing, it just would be greatly appreciated for your consideration.
So the $40,000 is to cover the rest of this budget year?
Yes.
For those things?
Right, that is what I mean. And I'll finish up with you, Mike.
So this is just an overview, a list, if you will, of the footprint of Pella, but that's really, you know, not just feet, that's arms and legs as well, with a bunch of volunteers to put on things like the Kier Smart. to put on things like the new Kierzmark that's out there. But these will be big shoes to fill for our incoming director. And there's plenty of activity that, that we want to do to keep people coming back to Pella. Next slide, please. With this, this is a group of people that you can talk to and practice some Main Street diplomacy, ask any questions. We look forward to meeting with you. We know that you won't be voting on this tonight, but we want to make ourselves available over the next month before you do to answer any kind of questions that you have. Pending your questions, Mayor, Council.
Corey, how far behind is the state on reimbursement for, like, the numbers, the June 2021? Was that for last quarter, last quarter of 2020?
I think they're a quarter behind.
Just one quarter?
No, two quarters.
I think it's two, right?
Yeah.
So you won't get, the first quarter of 2021 will not be good. The second quarter will be back to good?
Right, so, yeah, we'll be a little...
Your fourth, your fourth quarter this year payment will be, I think, close to normal?
Yeah.
Based on Mike?
Till the end of the year, maybe even right into the beginning of 2022, before we're fairly normal again. That's, that's correct.
Did you give one PPP loan or two?
Just the one.
Do you know why you didn't qualify for the second one?
I do not.
It's a type of entity they weren't, the first one, they weren't eligible for, because you're a, what are you?
C6.
A C6, that was, so they, they couldn't get the first one, they got the second.
And the, the CARES Act was a maximum of $25,000, and we did receive all $25,000 for that CARES Act. So we appreciated that tremendous opportunity.
Well, we got you. I'm going to just throw up an issue. I'm, I'm a visitor coming in from the west, get off at exit 40. There's a sign, visitor information this way, and then I'll get to about maybe Walmart or the Little West Park, and how on earth do I find you?
Yes, that is a good question. And we need to talk to the city about some additional signage. That'll be another conversation.
I mean, we're not unique with this. We, in travels, we've been to many communities where the sign says, "Visitor's info, now go find it."
Well, and you might have heard that with your volunteer efforts at the Central Park Information Windmill even, because we hear it at our office too. So we need another sign to get us, get our people where they want to be so they can find us. So we'll get, working on that too. We'll add that to our list.
Add that.
So one, one last plug, sorry, sir.
Oh, you go ahead.
I just wanted to offer one last plug. We do have a booth at the Iowa State Fair as well. So if you're an ambassador to Pella and you want a free ticket to go to the fair, we can hook you up with that. And you can tell them about all the events that make Pella excited.
So before you guys sit down, Jill alluded to it, but she's retiring. When, when is your date?
Well, currently, it's December 17, but I might move it up a week. Yeah, okay.
Okay, so Jill's retiring. I think all of us are aware of that. On behalf of the city, I want to thank you for your efforts over the years. Being in hospitality business, I do understand a lot of what you do and how important it is for our community. So I want to make sure and say thank you. And there's a lot of things that I get to do as mayor. Some are, some are good and some aren't so good. But one of the things that I was able to do is at the Bloom Fest this year, which Jill was very instrumental in getting that to Pella and getting it. But I get, I was contacted by the bluness, the pilots, and they put together a nice little plaque of thanks for, for Jill. They asked me if I would come out and, and present it to her at their organizational meeting. So before the, they did all come to Pella. They didn't end up getting to fly, but they were all there. So when they had their meeting, I don't know, it was probably 40, 40 guys sitting in a room, and I was able to give her the plaque.
Three of them are female pilots.
Did I just say guys? I'm sorry. I am so sorry. Pilots. I should make sure I say the pilots. Anyway, I was able to give Jill that plaque on behalf of them. And the appreciation in the room for what Jill has done was, was something you could really feel. And they, I think they gave her a standing ovation. And so it was a pretty cool moment. So thanks for, for what you've done over the years in promoting Pella and getting people there. Enjoy your retirement.
I hope to see you another time.
Yeah. Thank you. So we need some direction.
I support the $40,000 mandate until we can meaningfully discuss the next contract.
Yeah, that seems pretty easy to go ahead and try and put it on next meeting's agenda to give them the $40,000. Then we can just talk about the new contract once we have time for that. I think that's consensus.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on to the request from Wonderspelling to expand the Cultural Art Improvements Project.
All righty, Mr. Mayor. As Mayor Dwork stated, we have a potential amendment for some exciting enhancements to our joint project that we do have for Wonderspelling, and that's to expand the scope of the project. Now, it is important to note what we're currently proposing to do, or what's currently under, you know, under construction, is an all-inclusive playground addition at Kiwanis Park. And when you look at it, we do have some color renditions of the proposed park improvements, but once again, this is going to be a tremendous addition to our community. Now, with previously agreement that we had with Wonderspelling on it, was the city council approved $350,000 for the project. Now, it is important to note the lion's share of this is privately being fundraised in our community. Total cost is estimated, what the city recognizes the cost of the project, is just shy of $1.4 million. The Kiwanis Club, that is largely sponsoring this, has additional costs above and beyond that number. So most of this is privately being fundraised for the project. Now, let's go ahead, please, Mandy, if we could. Now, what we're here to talk tonight about is a potential opportunity that we have to expand amenities at the park. We do have a summary of them listed up on the slides, and for those following at home, let me take a peek around. I'm on slide number 18 on this as well. One of the exciting things about this is the arch that is being proposed in this second amendment that we have. Now, it is important to note that, again, we do have an opportunity for the amendment, what construction is taking place. So it is timely that we're talking about tonight. Now, as far as the total estimated cost on the project, our engineers are still working on that, giving us to finalize the estimated cost. But I think it's safe to say that it's likely going to be between $200, potentially $230,000. Now, the folks at Wonderspelling have been very generous with their donations to the city of Pella. I want to recognize them for that. What they've offered on this potential cost for this amendment, and again, we're talking between likely $200,000 to $230,000, what they've offered for, as far as the partnership agreement would be for the city to pay for the additional engineering fees, which totaled $11,500, and they would cover the remaining portion of the amendment on it, Mr. Mayor. Now, let's go ahead before we turn it over to Mr. Mark Whiskas for additional comments on, on the matter. It is important to note that we do have listed up here what we started off, the total project cost originally for the original contract was just shy of $1,257,000. Today, we've approved change orders and various additions to the project, just shy of $137,000. Now, this is kind of the high-end estimate that we're currently working on right here. But if it was $234,000, once again, what's being proposed for the city just to cover the additional engineering cost that would take to process the change order and additional changes to, and services to the project. Overall, as you can see, if we were to proceed with the amendment that we're talking about tonight, we'd be revised estimated cost of the project, which is just over $1,628,000. And I want to stress to council, this is a great amenity, and we're very fortunate to have this project within our community, and very thankful for the partnership that we do have with Wonderspelling to build this for the city of Pella. Now, as far as the timeliness, the reason why this is time-sensitive, the contractor's on-site building right now, if we're going to make a decision to add these amenities on, on it, we need timely feedback at the council and relatively some quick action that we need to follow. Mainly, what would occur at our August 3 meeting, we would have various administrative items that would need to take place. We have to approve our partnership or amend our partnership agreement with Wonderspelling. We'd also have to approve an additional engineering amendment for Snyder and Associates, who's the engineer on the project. In addition, we'd also have a change order for the construction portion of the project as well. So there'd be some administrative items that would be formally addressed on August 3. And once again, what we're here to talk tonight about is the amenities being added. And that basically concludes our presentation, Mr. Mayor, of this. We'd be more than happy to answer any questions, but we'd like to turn the floor over beforehand to make sure that we do hear from Wonderspelling. Mr. Mark Whiskas is in attendance tonight to talk about the various amenities and the proposal that's being made with the city council.
Floor is yours, Mark.
All right. So just being involved in this project, it has been a very terrific project to be part of. And this community has been so financially supportive of this project that when we started it, we, you know, we came to you guys and asked for this much money, and then we kept growing and kept growing. And as we've been going out and educating the community about what we're doing, the passion that we get from the community, they're supporting it financially, and we keep being able to add different playground equipment to the park. And we felt the last time we added the ages 2 to 5-year-old group playground equipment, and the financial support kept coming in. And now we're to the point that we feel we can add a shelter house and this, it's called the Sonal Arch, which is great for an all-inclusive, disabled musical equipment, musical toys and games that are part of this, that we all know that the more we can do ahead of time, we don't have to go back in, tear the fences down, redo the construction. We can save money by doing the project now, getting it ready, running some of the, you know, the PVC piping and doing a lot of that today, where we can save money. And we want to only just be good stewards of the donations, the money that we're getting in, and use it in our best interest. But this is a part for our community, and we have faith that the community is still going to support this project and carry us through to what we're asking for. So, and again, all we're asking for is you guys to pay the engineering cost. I feel very confident that we will financially support and fundraise the rest of the money.
Any questions for Mark?
I saw a picture this morning of that Sonal Arch.
Sonal Arch.
That is an amazing thing. It is amazing. I'm all for it. My, my problem is I've been doing some snooping around out there, and that retention basin is ridiculous. I mean, the green space is gone. You're just going to have a pit full of weeds out there instead of...
And we have Diane. I think Diane is on the line.
Yes, I am.
Diane, would you like to address that?
It isn't that retention basin.
So the detention basin is set in there to address some of the storm water, to address the storm water on site. We are adding a lot of pavement to this, this parkland. And so we, we need to address the storm water that will be caused, run off caused by that. So that is put in place to address that storm water so that we don't cause flooding downstream or throughout the, the adjacent neighbors. The, it is, it does look steep on the south and west ends there. It will have a more gradual slope coming off of the sidewalk, the new sidewalk connection to Orchard Avenue, so that it'll have a gradual slope into that area. It is intended to be mown lawn and not have standing water for long periods of time, just immediately after stormwater events.
I'm sure you have your, your standards and your calculations. It just looks ridiculous to me. I'd like anybody to go take a look.
So they're asking us to invest $11,000?
It's a no-brainer. It's a no-brainer. Really appreciate what you guys do.
We'll see your quarter of a million and match you with a quarter.
All right. You want to do the sewer now?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So that pretty clear direction there again, Mike. So we're, we're now going to address the Southwest Sanitary Sewer Extension to serve Prairie Ridge, Block 3.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, once again, I'd like to direct council's attention to the big board for discussion on a potential project that we have, a joint project enhanced development within our community. And for those following at home, I'm on slide number 24. And as Mayor Dwork stated, what we're here to talk tonight about is a potential expansion of the Southwest sanitary sewer system. Now, in explaining this item, what you see up on the big board, just to orientate everyone right here, we have Highway 163 right here. Old Ford is located over here. The Prairie Ridge development that we have for the single-family and affordable workforce housing is located right up here. The commercial plan that we are tentatively scheduled to consider on August 3 for Prairie Ridge, and that is the home of the proposed Smash Bar recreational center, is located right here in the pink area that we have over here. Now, in explaining this project, originally, when we entered into this and the developers were working on the project, the sanitary sewer line for the project was scheduled to go to the east of the project over here, when you look at the sanitary sewer line for the Prairie Ridge development that we have. Now, it is important to note when we talked about east that we had, as far as building the sanitary sewer line to the east, it's somewhat problematic because of the depth of the sanitary sewer that is located to the east. And also, it's a very congested right-of-way when you look at the eastern portion of the community. So in looking at options and talking long-term for the developers, and keep in mind, when we talk about the residential housing, we've just basically been building in the west, in the group plans in the northeast corner. We have our commercial area that's located down here for the development as well, right in here. So when you look at, only a portion of the potential development has been built. And ultimately, when we look at what it's going to take to actually rebuild and actually redevelop and continue development plans at Prairie Ridge and also the western side of our community, it's going to be an extension of the sanitary sewer system. Now, in explaining this item, and what we look at, developers is potentially going in on a joint project where we would build an extension of the sanitary sewer system that would be right here. So it'd be this brown area, the blue area, and ultimately, the green area that we would connect over here to the existing trunk sewer that is located for the development. What that would do would free up additional property that could be developed within our corporate limits and even outside the property that is owned by the current developers as well. And when you look at it long-term from the city of Pella standpoint, it's important to note when we talk about the context of this project, and Mandy, I think we may have a better map if we can go on to slides. So that's just this. Let's go on back to the previous slide on, on here. But when we talked about the city sanitary sewer system, back in 1998, we came up with a long-range plan for the city's sanitary sewer system. And at the time, there you go, thank you. When we looked at this, the city invested in building the Southwest trunk sewer right here, that's located in Rad. And the ultimate goal was to be able to service property, frankly, that was north of Washington Street in G28 at, at the time, particularly at this draw that we have up, up here. And so when we made the investment back in 1998, the intention was ultimately to be able to serve additional development to allow the community to continue to grow in the near, in the future. That was done back in 1998. That line, I'm probably a little bit off on my timing on this, but that line, I believe, was constructed in 2003, 2004. In addition, we also made additional investments in lift stations and force mains as well for the sanitary sewer. So let's, let's go ahead, Mandy, if we can go back to the second slide on this presentation. So what's being proposed is an extension for the development of this new sanitary sewer line that you see up here, that's in kind of a purplish color right here. It'd be roughly a 4,900 linear foot line on it. Now, under the partnership, what's being proposed is that the city would construct the line, and that we would ultimately own the line when it's all said and done and be public infrastructure. The discharge from the commercial property of Prairie Ridge would go into this line. In addition, it could facilitate position the city for future growth with additional development if this line were constructed, both within the Prairie Ridge property parameters and also outside the Prairie Ridge property parameters as well. So what's being proposed is the city would construct the line. The estimated cost on the line's $866,000 on it. And what the developer has been proposed is that for the first $900,000 of the project, they would reimburse the city dollars of the project, they would reimburse the city for that. If costs are above nine hundred thousand dollars for the project, what the proposal and what the tentative proposal is, is the parties would work in good faith, address any cost overruns or potential cost overruns for the project on it. So from a city's standpoint, the key takeaway is, back in nineteen ninety-eight, when we talked about the city sanitary sewer system and what it would take to have and facilitate additional growth and development on the western edge of our property, a project like this has always been envisioned from the city's standpoint, from a long-term planning standpoint. Second item is that we have an opportunity to work in conjunction on a project to extend the city sanitary sewer system, which could facilitate and promote additional growth within our community. The third takeaway is the developer is proposing to reimburse us for the cost of the project. If the costs exceed nine hundred thousand, the parties would be agreeing to work in good faith on this. Now, what I would say, as far as the ultimate timeline on this, this is very, it's extremely a time-sensitive issue that we have. If council wanted to move forward with the agreement, there's several items that would need to take place. We included a draft agreement in the council packet. We'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have on this. The formal consideration of that agreement would take place on August 3rd. We'd also have an engineering agreement with the city's engineer, that would be Beanstrung Kim, to actually build the line on it. We'd also be considering both potentially preliminary plat amendment, because on the preliminary plat for Prairie Ridge, the commercial segment, it showed the line going to the east, not to the west on it. And we'd also have an amendment for the Prairie Ridge final plat on August 3rd. So there's several items that would need to take place in order to facilitate timely development. But ultimately, the key takeaway on this is this project, it fits in with the city's long-term plans, the developers proposing to reimburse the city for the cost of the project. And three, it's very sensitive when you look at the commercial development that's taking place out there, because this would be the line that would serve the new commercial development, and that is the proposed location for the Smash Park Recreation Center on it as well. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes our presentation. We'd be more than happy to answer any questions about the need for this project, long-term plans, the draft agreement that we have. In addition, we do have representatives from the development here as well this evening.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Jay, do you want to add anything?
Mike said all for myself.
Okay.
It would be wonderful if that trunk sewer finally got some use.
It'd probably loosen a lot of troubles not having enough sewers go through it, would be my guess.
So we don't have to pump raw water to the pump station twice a year, a pleasure?
Yeah.
And we don't have to pay for it.
Well, I am... You're doing a pretty smart long-range campaign back there.
I have, I do have a question. The project shall be administered by the city. Our staff is busy. Are we gonna have, is our staff gonna be compensated at all for this? I mean, is that part of the good faith? We've heard that before in the...
No.
But just, I just pose a question, okay? I'm not really necessarily asking for an answer, just a concern, because you guys are busy. Another thing I'm reading from here, do we not have all the easements? Is that fifteen, twenty acre that it goes through, is there a easement through there?
Yeah, these are, that's a very good question. We alluded to that in the memo on it. Land acquisition would be a part of this. Now, what the agreement requires the developer to do is turn over any easements for the sanitary sewer to the city. But there is off-site property easements that would have to be acquired, and it's like any property, we'd work in good faith with the property owners. The key takeaway is usually when you talk about sanitary sewer lines with property owners, it's often viewed, when you look at adding value to the property, sanitary sewer lines add value to the property on it as well, and so...
Yeah, I think that's a push on this one, especially the owner that's there, that currently owns it, didn't buy it to develop it. It could even go to considerable legal, and that's also a concern of mine, because who's gonna take care of that?
Well, the way the development agreement has and what's being initially negotiated with the developers, the estimated cost, and we do have land acquisition and the estimated cost...
Right, I saw that. But the time...
Yeah. The time, you know, to take a step back from city staff's standpoint, development is one of the lifebloods of the community. No way I can doubt about it. You're either growing or you're going the opposite direction on it. And from our standpoint, we view development as extremely high priority for the city of Pell, and so this project would be a high priority of staff. And I would tell you, and you have our commitment, we would work very, very hard on this project if council authorizes it on it. Now, looking and answering the questions, land acquisition is always a concern. I'm not, that's not on there, but we would approach it as...
My whole intent here, Michael, is I'm concerned about the time of our staff, because you guys, and this is going to take a significant amount of your time.
Right.
And that's my concern. I have one other question.
Yes.
That lift station that we have just put in there, would that have needed to be put in if this had been run?
Well...
Just going out there, and when I look, it looks like not, but...
Well, I think that's probably a question that would be posed to, you know, the engineering staff. When you look at lift stations and the necessity, that was based on a plan. I think the best way to answer this from the developer's standpoint is if you were to go back to that first map, Mandy, that we had the first slide, the lift station was planned somewhere, the vicinity of the lift stations up here was also planned with that sanitary sewer line going off here to the east. That was part of that. The developers reanalyzed plans, and it's like any project, once you get into projects, new information becomes available.
I understand. Just posing the question, because I think the sewer line probably had to go through there anyway, but, and, and, yeah, hold on a sec. That, it's going to be upkeep, it's long-term, there's power provided, and we will have the upkeep of it.
Yeah. Now, the lift station was intended to serve the residential development, and Denny, maybe you could add probably a better description on the necessity of that.
That sixty-some acres in that corner, that wet well is like thirty-seven feet below this trunk. So for that piece of property to develop it, it needed a pump station. Otherwise, it would have had to wait until clear around Pell in the north fifty years from now. Okay? But could, you know, would it change, and then the first new housing been on the ridge? Make sure you're not...
Okay. Thank you.
This way, look.
That's all I got.
Okay. Good questions. Thank you.
Anything else?
By the way, I am in favor of it, because it'll be a great use of existing line, and it'll open that developmental. I am concerned about your staff, staff's time, and I wish there was some other way that we didn't place that kind of load on our staff. That's all.
Anything else? Any comments? So, we got what you need, Mike?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All righty. Mr. Mayor, if we can go to number F to please, what we're talking about Prairie Ridge.
Okay. So the West Washington Street and Five Field Road intersection improvement, yeah?
Yes, sir. And once again, what we're talking about this evening is potential improvements at West Washington Street and Five Field Road as the Prairie Ridge commercial development is coming online with the first business entity being the proposed Smash Park that is scheduled to come online in two thousand and twenty-two. We did have an engineering review of traffic improvements off-site on this location. So this would be the location of Washington Street and the newly extended Five Field Road up into the development, so the commercial development that we're talking about is located right over here. Now, as a part of that engineering review, and it's dependent on when the commercial entities come online with the projected traffic of it, basically stated at the time, and Beanstrung Kim conducted the traffic analysis, when you look at the Smash Park and potential other business entities that may be developing out there, the thought was to maintain the existing surface levels on the city streets. That was one of the questions, what type of off-site improvements would we need to be undertaken on it? And there was two that came to mind on it. One of them was right when you go into the development, constructing a right-hand turn lane right into the development. And the second one is the development develops, the additional entities, business entities, businesses locate out in this development, there will be a need for traffic signals at some point in time. So what we're here to talk tonight about is, one of the things with the Smash Park and the analysis that we did was the recommendation was that that right-hand turn lane should really correspond with the opening of the proposed Smash Park being fairly close to the same timeframe. And ultimately, what we're looking to do is to construct, and what we would propose to do is to construct the right-hand turn lane in two thousand and twenty-two. And what we'd like to do is begin the engineering services on this and bid the project next year, so that right-hand turn lane can be constructed by the time Smash Park is opened up on there, and then we'll continue to evaluate traffic levels on there. It's very likely that traffic signals will need to be built at some point in time. It's almost, it's, you have a, the key dilemma is, when you talk about traffic signals, is you can't use a traffic forecast for traffic signals. You have to have hard data on that, and that's actual traffic at the time. And the reason why I'm telling this is, you can always go ahead and build traffic signals if the city was willing to pay for, but our share of the federal gas tax could be used to pay for those traffic signals. A big portion of the traffic signals, about eighty percent of the cost of the traffic signals could be used from the federal gas tax. And so what we're proposing to do is to construct the right-hand turn lane in two thousand and twenty-two. We'll monitor the traffic as soon as we meet warrants, that's when the traffic signals will be built in that development. And at that time, what we're proposing to do for roughly about eighty percent of the cost would be to use our federal gas tax for the traffic signals. Now, the cost of this project, I'm gonna, let's break this off, and Mandy, I think we have the construction estimates that we have. We're looking at an engineering services agreement for the right-hand turn lane of just over thirty-eight thousand. The construction cost of the traffic signals is about seventy-three. So I've seen estimates on this project anywhere from eighty to a hundred thousand dollars. What we're proposing to do eventually, what's going to happen and what's going to be paid for out of the development, what's being proposed, is the new valuations from the development of Prairie Ridge, so this would be the Smash Park and any additional businesses that would be locating there. We plan to capture the valuations in there and pay ourselves back for the off-site investments that we're making in the development. So in this case, if we were to look at this and look at the cost of the seventy-three, plus the thirty-eight, about a hundred and ten thousand dollars that you have, or a little bit over that, eventually what would happen is the city would plant the seed money, make the improvements, and as valuations come back in over time and we pay our obligations back, that's when we'd be reimbursed for the cost of this improvement. The key takeaway on this is, when you look at traffic, and what we've always tried to do with development and planning developments, is we've always tried to maintain existing service levels on city streets. So the thought is, is we make investments in our community, encourage development, we want to make sure that we maintain the same type of traffic on city streets. And what we've had is, based off our engineering analysis, we believe the right-hand turn lane is necessary and probably should be built as businesses are located out there as a part of development. What we'd like to be able to do is get started on the engineering services agreement to build the right-hand turn lane. So, Mr. Mayor, what we're looking for is direction on the right-hand turn lane, and ideally, we'd like to have that right-hand turn lane constructed in two thousand and twenty-two. Okay?
Go for it. How full does the development have to be before you do the traffic study for the traffic lights?
We think it's gonna be relatively soon that the traffic levels are gonna be met for warrants, but it's gonna take actual counts on that to do it. It'll be relatively soon after that.
Like within two, two years, probably?
Well, with the, with the development agreement, I believe we went through there and we've looked at the businesses, but what we had, the knowns that we have, is we have the Smash Park Recreation Center in two thousand and twenty-two. Current, I believe, what we have is the non-binding resolution to support that we've discussed at the second business by two thousand and twenty-four. Now, I will say this, that we're fortunate, there's been significant level of interest in developing in Pell, and we're very fortunate for that. So again, the key takeaway is, we'll make sure that the traffic signals are constructed, but we have to make sure we have counts on them first.
I don't know, if we could do it now, I think it's appropriate now or at the end. But I have had a lot of people really having a difficult time, especially getting off, if you're going toward Des Moines, getting off of that exit, and to try and make a left-hand turn. Truck drivers are just having a hiss at it, and they stop coming from the west, but the east, you know, the only stop is Walmart light, and they just come and make, I had a trucker say yesterday, he sat there for twelve minutes to try and turn left. Finally, he ended up turning right. Just something to look at. I don't know. Washington is getting really busy, and I'm worried with the development going on out there, it's gonna do nothing but get worse.
No doubt it is, correct. I'm surprised nobody asked, the engineering is extremely high here, and the reason for that is we're actually doing a master plan design of the whole intersection.
Oh, good.
So we get the footing spotted, because where the footings are, the mast arm length, wind roads, or everything, single thing. So we're doing that with this project, so it's...
Dealing with it every day is, and then other, yeah, especially, you know, there's a fair amount of industry in that neck of the woods, too. There's a lot of semis running around there. They're having...
Which intersection are you...
Where you come off of, by, you're heading toward Des Moines, on exit forty, and you come around the loop, and then try and turn left to go into Pell.
Well, I mean, coming up here, it'd be a...
You don't tell me about it. I'm sat by six minutes there before.
I'm out there often, so I know how that happens.
Yeah, it's that, it's just all Washington. We shouldn't, we need to look at something, but it's a busy street.
Washington, A three lane road, it's not far away.
Man, I hope that doesn't... Really, there you go. You're adding the turn lane in the middle then, so that'll help turning, but there's part of that as a turn lane, they're very ready for it. The center, like Walmart and, yeah, so I don't, just...
It's very, very busy.
Even another stoplight or something, and I'm not advocate for stoplights, but even another light would stop traffic so it would allow, anyhow.
Good point.
I'm not sad.
Okay?
Yeah. As they always say, is that growing communities, traffic problems are good problems to have.
It's better to not advocate.
All righty, Mr. Mayor.
Now, you want to go back to C?
Yes, sir. What we have this evening is, we just want to make sure, and Scott has not been planning to have any public measures on the ballot in the November general election, but we wanted to make sure, sure of that, and talk to council before moving on the item. Looking at this matter to Mandy, and I believe we also have requests from other communities here as well, and specifically, we have received requests from the city of Knoxville, Bussy, and Melter Dallas, and what those folks would like to do is, they would like to hold a referendum in their community on the extension of the local option sales and services tax. And they've asked for our support of their endeavors. Now, just to make sure, the reason why they're asking for Pell, in order to hold a referendum in your, in your community, you have to have the support of at least fifty percent of the governing bodies in the county to call local option sales and services tax. Pell, with its population, estimates was about a third of the county, so usually as a rule of thumb, if you're gonna have the referendum, you either need two of the three, you need Marion County, the unincorporated area of Marion County, city of Pell, or the city of Knoxville, two of the three have to agree to it if you're gonna have a referendum. Knoxville would like to hold a referendum in this November on the matter. Now, I want to make very clear, just because we passed a resolution to support saying we endorsed having elections in Washington, this does not mean we're gonna have an election here. That's a separate issue. All we would be doing is just giving them endorsements so they can move on with plans in their community. Our current local option sales and services tax expires at the end of December two thousand and twenty-two on it. So, A, the first question tonight, we just want to double-check to make sure there's no special election issues we want to place on the November ballot, and the second issue is the resolution to support for these other communities that have asked about it.
When you say that first bullet point, support of city councils, do you also mean the board of supervisors as well, too?
Absolutely, yes.
So if we're coming up December twenty-three, when do you think that we would have an interest in doing it? When do you think that would go in November, next November? Twenty-two? I'm just asking.
Yeah. I think the best way to describe the, our referendum, the extension of our tax, it corresponds with projects. And I would say, from our standpoint, we've talked a lot about facilities on it, and so when we have our plans finalized on it, would be the time that we would have it. Generally, the rule of thumb, I think if you were to look at a textbook case, when you should be looking at it, maybe a year and a half, two years out, sometime right around there, at least talked about, considered having a referendum, but probably more importantly, if you're gonna hold a referendum, you have to have down your financial plans what you're gonna have the use for. And we're still in the process of working on that, so...
Very good. I'm sure no one has a problem with, we need our feeder communities to be healthy.
Yeah.
Okay? All right. Last item on the...
Yes, sir.
List is the Boss Line Conference Center.
Yeah. What we're here, for those following at home, I'm on slide number twenty-two. What we'd like to talk to the council about this is repairs at the Boss Line Conference Center. As the council is aware, we suffered significant damage at the Boss Line Conference Center, and also was the former boss longer... Center, and also, it was the former Bossland, or Lawn and Bunker. This, this happened in early two thousand and twenty. It's one of the projects when it occurred that was just prior to COVID-nineteen occurring at the city of Pella. What happened at the time, the insurance company gave us the replacement cost of the value of the facility. They paid four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars on it. We paid two hundred thousand dollars to clean up the facility and just repair it, basically just to clean it on there and get the water damage out of the facility. What the insurance company would like to know is if we have plans to restore it to what it was prior to the water damage. And so with this, so what happened is, to answer the question and looking at our options, that was a picture of what the conference center would look like before. I don't know if we have one of what it currently looks like, Mandy. It doesn't look like that now on it. One of the questions would be is, when we talk about potential conference centers, the insurance company would like to know if we're going to do anything, or if we're just going to leave it and close the case. If we're going to try to restore it, if there's additional, Corey, help me out, there is additional insurance coverage to pay for restoring it to what it was before. From city staff's standpoint, we think there's potential opportunities for the conference center on it, and what you would need if we're going to restore it, what would have to happen, is we would need a proceed of hiring an architect on it. We have been in preliminary discussions with clearing and associates to help us out with the project. But from our standpoint, some things that we hear about at Bossland and that we have not taken action on yet, because we've been somewhat limited with the conference center in Bossland and Bunker, there continues to be interest for restaurants out, out of the conference center. One of the things that we hear about is still a need for large gathering spaces like what used to happen with the conference center out there as well. So any types of plans that we would do as far as a renovation have to be timed to the intended use of the facility. And so tonight, what we'd like to have is the initial discussion, do we intend to at least restore it to what it is, or are we basically going to close the case on it and just stop the project right now? Corey, is there anything else to add on this matter? Okay.
Potential additional dollars are available.
To restor, it's to restoration costs. So in reserve, they have about a half million dollars set aside right now. And so that's why they're, it does affect our insurance rates, too, so they're trying to resolve that.
So that just restore it to its pre, previous condition?
Yeah, or, or similar. So we would have to run by any, any proposal received from an architect, which would provide them to see any analysis of whether to increase the cost or decrease the cost of restoration.
Denny, have we ever had any structural analysis done on that? Is it structurally sound? Foundation's good?
We had electricians go through it, graders went through it pretty thoroughly for us, you know, before we turned it and re-energized the furnaces, even when we took them on our own heat, heat building warm rest of that.
Right.
You know, along with that, too, the, there's a big deal in that, they give us credits for the basement, too. You may remember the basement, in its day, it was high quality stuff, but over the years, we've taken care of it, and it was obvious how it got flooded and just junked down there. And I don't see, I mean, it's a huge number, if anybody started restoring the basement back to the way it was. So, you know, the best bank for our bucks is to get the upstairs. If we could utilize all that money upstairs, we could make a nice.
When we purchased that facility, we had an inspector come through and evaluate it prior to submitting the initial purchase. So that was the last.
Structurally, it sounds, you know, there was that, they put quite a bit in that, that pie-shaped, structural-wise, but.
But we put heated floors, we beefed in all that, we spent a quarter million doing it. So all in all, some of it, you know, as concrete old like that, it's just that pie sheet, piece heads.
Right, yeah. Okay, as long as we're sure, we don't want to throw good money after bad, as long as it's structurally sound.
It's a big building, it's always going to take some, you know, line.
I'd be remiss if I didn't say, too, if you look at what's happened over the last twenty-four months, we've had two housing developments that have occurred out of Bossland and as well, totally, right around, memory certain, exactly about eighty-four additional housing units in our community as well. So again, it's.
I don't see it personally.
I think another big piece of that discussion is going to be, do we truly put a real commercial kitchen back in, which could eat up three, four hundred thousand if you want a restaurant in there, because it's junked in, a lot of those rented equipment is no longer there. Dishwashers and some of the fryers, they're gone, what was there, it was trash and they got trash.
Are you talking about where the restaurant and the pie area was?
Yep.
That's where the kitchen, there wasn't any kitchen in this section.
No.
Oh, yeah, there, there's damage over there.
There was kitchen.
It was like.
The doors were wet, the ceilings were wet.
In the kitchen area?
Yeah.
Yeah, because there, there's that little piece that, that connects that with the dining room.
Yeah.
But my point is, if we restore the whole first floor to its original, you're still missing a commercial kitchen, a state-of-the-art stuff.
So we received four hundred and seventy-five thousand from the insurance company. We spent two hundred thousand to clean it, so we're sitting on two hundred and seventy-five thousand. We can get an additional five hundred thousand to.
Whatever costs.
Whatever costs. So potentially, we have seven hundred thousand to, approximately, to redo it, or we take the two hundred thousand and demolish it.
Yeah, essentially, that's right, yeah.
Okay. If we restore it, then we'd have to find a tenant? That would be the.
Make it useful. We definitely have some plan to make it useful.
And we have received interest in, in that, though nothing's guaranteed in the whole world, but there is interest.
You may.
Jeanette, does that basement have any potential for some of your other programs that are busting at the seams?
I mean, I think just access to it, because there's no access to it, except for stairs. I think you'd do something with the outside somewhere, but I mean, it's just a lot of space, so.
So.
Go for it.
Or redoing it, or at least restoring it, see what might come down interest if we do that. Maybe it's wise to find, if there is an interested party, find out how interested in, that could affect how you fix it up, you know?
That's a big part of a healthy golf course.
Yeah, yeah, something. All right, I believe that's the end of our list, right?
I believe so, sir.
Think out all you need. All right. So now we will, any council members have any other business that you'd like to bring up for us to address tonight? All right, so then we have our, any members of the public have any other business that needs to be addressed? If so, come to the mic, state your name and address, please. I'm asking, please limit your comments to three minutes. I don't like to cut people off, but I will if I have to. Okay, it's eight fifteen, you've got three minutes. Whenever you want to say, get it done in three minutes, please.
Less than. Good evening again, I'm Michelle Jones, I live over Sunset, so that area of town. I want to talk about the dress code again, there's a few people here for the same reason. Number one, I want to thank you for all your work. I know you guys worked on it, spent a lot of hours on it, so thank you for that. Just after reviewing it, I looked at the two things that were probably, that stuck out was one, that you had added the no-tape used as a replacement for a bathing suit. I thought that was a, a good addition. What it was missing, in my opinion, was something that specified exact body parts to be covered and in, in what would be considered appropriate. So my question to you would be, if the same situation happened as did spurred all of this in the first place, and now the individual did not have her breasts taped, what would happen? Like, what would, what happens then? Does there?
Well, you're asking us a hypothetical situation. Our staff, our staff has to deal with these things on a daily basis.
So it would be up to the staff?
Staff would make some kind of decision, yes.
At the pool?
At the pool, yes.
Okay. And who, like, what position is that? Is that a supervisor that would make that? Okay. And then my question is also, how old is the oldest supervisor at the pool? Do we know roughly?
That's probably civil rights.
I was going to say, I don't think we can give personal information.
I won't ask their age, date of birth, social security number, none of that. However, just as a general concern, my impression is that they're all quite young, and the lifeguards, a lot of them are minors, and I feel it's a law, a big ask for that age group to be discerning things, so there's that. All right, so by not specifically mentioning body parts to be covered, in my opinion, it basically just kicks the can down the road for the next incident in two, or three, or five years, and it puts the responsibility, since the code is lacking, or the policy's lacking, in my opinion, puts the responsibility on the pool staff to discern or judge a tricky situation. And to me, I think that's unfair to put that on them. So I want to express my, my thanks to the people that I feel like probably pushed for a more comprehensive policy. I also wanted to express my disappointment that it was lacking in those areas, in my opinion, and possibly opens us up to, you know, another incident where we just have to, like, you know, figure it out then, just passing the buck. So that's it.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Leo Vermeer, I live here in Pella, Iowa, and I'm just, I want to preface this by saying, I do have somewhere to be after this, so I'm going to kind of book it after I'm done with this. I'm here to just address the members of the council about the pool issue. And I wrote something for this. I stand before you today fighting a losing battle, but I will keep fighting. Every fight I fight, I help my brothers and sisters and siblings get closer to our goal, to be treated like human beings, to be treated with respect. This is our suffrage movement. My existence as a trans man is not a fad, nor corruption, or misguidedness. People like to act like my transgender siblings freely and openly transitioning is a recent phase that will soon go away. This is not the case. We have always been here, and we are not going away anytime soon. Native Americans, the Aztecs, and Incas all had their own terms for transgender people. In Samoa and Haiti, we have lived and suffered and persevered, and for hundreds of years we have tried to live peacefully. Being transgender is to live in constant unrest. Each morning, I wake up and loathe every inch of my body. It's hard to explain to someone who doesn't understand. I was born here in Pella into a God-fearing family. I went to Pella Christian grade school for six years. I never met a transgender or gay person until I was thirteen, but from the moment I could see myself in the mirror, I knew something was wrong. But I never had the words. I would have my hair braided, and I felt the need to chop it all off. I would wear dresses and feel like ripping them to shreds. I would see a princess in a fairy tale, and I wanted to be the knight that saved her. I would see the Boy Scouts and think to myself, I want to learn how to build, not do girly stuff. I never once had someone shoving their transgender mist down my throat. Living as a trans man is extremely danger, dangerous. Not only do people threaten my life every single day, but trying to live my most authentic life can be physically dangerous to me. To have a flat chest, I wear a binder. It compresses my chest and simply makes it flat. But with excessive wear of cheap materials and exercise, it can break a rib very easily. I bruised my ribs more times than I can count. A way to achieve a flat chest without much risk is open chest binding. Open chest binding utilizes exercise tape, but some companies sell skin tone tape specifically for open chest binding. The tape can be worn for exercising, swimming, and is meant to be worn for long periods of time. It sufficiently covers the breasts and gives the approximate appearance of, of a flat chest. Picture it as a strapless bikini top on a woman. A trans man going to the pool and safely enjoying his time is not a woman exposing herself to children, it's a trans man existing. If you have a problem with trans people using locker rooms, please look the other way. Trans people are not here to creep on your children. I have heard over and over again that parents are worried about pedophiles using the system to go into the women's locker room. This is wholly unrealistic and cartoonish. Pedophiles are generally smart, calculating monsters. Most are not stupid enough to try and pull this kind of stuff. I've heard the counterargument, I have heard the counter to this argument.
Three, three minutes are up, I've got to cut you off, sorry. Sorry. Thanks for your comments.
Thank you.
Keith Harsburg, two-two-four South Street. Last meeting, we had discussion on paving and several projects. Was South Perry on that?
South Perry Street.
South Perry Street. The gravel road by the eatings in the city.
I don't think so.
Last meeting, you added a few more to your previous plan. Could that be added yet?
Is it Prairie or?
It's the, the street in my ward.
Yeah.
I believe that, that is in the CIP, that, that project is in the city's five-year debt.
It's been on the shortlist for a while.
Yes.
So, yeah, it's, it's in the, I know we have like a five-year street plan, it's in that plan somewhere, I don't remember exactly where, but, yeah, it's in the street plan.
Okay. To echo, this, or Jones, excuse me. The pool director, is she up for rehire, or, or is this a yearly position that's hired? I would.
Again, I don't think we can discuss staff issues at this meeting.
I would like to suggest that maybe we find another employee in that spot. So that's my suggestion to the council, you know, take or leave it. Also, did any of you guys attend the meeting with Jacob Hall? In person or online, or?
I did not, if I can only speak for myself.
I would appreciate it, you know, if you guys kind of be in tune with the citizens as, as their wants and desires are investigated and researched. If you guys could, you know, kind of follow with that, that would be appreciated by us. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pastor Michael Schover, Christ Redeemer Church, I will be much more kind than I have been. Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm back to speak to you again, but I'm, again, not going to be so hard on you as I was previously. Today, I do want to help you think about your role as city council members from a perspective that you may not have considered. I want to draw my analogy from the book that built Western civilization called the Bible. When God planted a garden and he put Adam in it, he gave him two tasks, to beautify the garden and to protect the garden. And as we read the story, it becomes clearer that even though Adam is in paradise, he, he should have asked himself, well, a threat from what? What do I need to protect from? Well, we know that it was from the attack of the servant. Adam was the king of the world, and true, he was the only one there, and he was entrusted with providing protection for the land and for its future residents from satanic threats. Now, the threat that the servant displayed was not a show of force, he was not brandishing firearms, he was not amassing armies. He came instead with a subtlety of lies and deceptions, which were specifically designed to make Eve question the goodness and wisdom of God's laws. The reason Adam and Eve sinned when they ate of the tree of the knowledge of good and evil is not because God wanted them to remain in ignorance, rather, he wanted them to learn how to distinguish good and evil from the perspective of obedience to God's commands. Later, many thousands of years later, King Solomon prayed that God would give him an understanding mind so that he could govern the people of Israel by knowing good and evil, and God made him the wisest man who has ever lived. But what Adam and Eve did, and later Solomon, when he fell, was this, they, instead of discerning good and evil from the perspective of God's commands, they believed the servant. They questioned the goodness and wisdom of God's laws, and they became a law unto themselves. They each did what was right in their own eyes, and as a result, societal chaos ensued along with all manners of sexual sins flowing out in that path of ruin. God destroyed the world because of these things with a flood. King Solomon likewise experienced the destruction of his kingdom. The point is, however, the same. When we reject God's laws, the result is wrath. City council members, my point is simply this, you do a magnificent job of the first task that Adam was given to do of beautifying Pella. That's what you've been talking about tonight. That's what you've been talking about tonight. You do an amazing job. The beauty that is found here in this town is incomparable. Pella is literally the crown jewel of Iowa, and I thank you very much for doing a great job at making the city beautiful. But this aquatic center incident has revealed is, that you may not have realized that this other aspect of your, other aspect of your job is to protect the garden. You are to protect Pella from the lies of the serpent, and those lies are designed to break down the family, and Orange City can testify that if you let this go, it will turn into total public endorsement of sexual immorality and the corruption of our children.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is John Neifert. I am from rural Ottley, and just want to address the same issue there at the aquatic center. So, first of all, thank you guys for your intent to, you know, adjust the policies and the dress code and things like that, but as Michelle stated, this doesn't directly address, you know, what is appropriate by biological sex rather than gender. So, there was some, you know, good movement there, but I think it's not where it needs to be in order to prevent a repeat of some of the incidents that have happened already, right? There is no mention of sex, or gender, or biology, or male, or female, right? It does not address that, you know, someone dressing by their gender identity in public. As we look at this, right, it may or may not be whatever you think, but really, this is an issue of public nudity, regardless of, you know, the individual's intent, or things like that. This is an issue. This is an issue worth fighting for, and it's a hill we're dying on, right? We are seeking to protect and love and have compassion on everyone, our children, our grandchildren, you know, and those like the young trans man here that came to speak to you as well. I have family members, I have nieces and nephews. We approach, you know, as we look at this, right, and if we think about this in terms of public nudity, we must approach this as an abolition perspective. It's not, we will allow some nudity and not others, right? We saw with, you know, recent incidents that there is not a law here that really protects this, so, right, do we want to offend others? Absolutely not. And in situations like this, there is no way to appoint, right, there's that recognition. Consider those who were offended, you know, the employees who were offended to the point of walking away from the job, walking away from their source of income. That's, that's a big deal. So, I urge you not to stop, right, but to continue to take the ball forward, continue to pursue actions that protect. You know, first of all, maybe you can take the next step in addressing and updating the dress code to align with biological sex. You could take other steps, really, to further prevent our city from further exposure to this, you know, through a code that addresses public nudity. This is really what we're trying to prevent and, you know, trying to protect from, right? This action has been taken by many, I mean, hundreds of other cities around the nation, you know, with effectiveness and not showing discrimination on others. It is based on, you know, standards of sex rather than gender, right? You know, and I think a couple, couple council meetings ago, it was addressed and said, hey, you know, maybe there's some, you know, hesitation to act for fear of litigation, right? And I want to, you know, say to you, right, you know, because of the state gender identity protections and things like that put in place, don't allow that to be an excuse, right? I think you heard before, the citizens are behind you as well. I have had some conversations with some council that said, hey, they would be willing to represent the city and to defend the city if that were the case. So, I just want to make that aware, so that you don't allow that fear of the cost to the taxpayer to be a deterrent. So, thank you.
Thank you. Guys aren't doing a good job keeping to three minutes. I don't want to yell at you, so...
My name is Ian Liddolski, and I'm on New Lee to Pella. We moved here in November of 2017, and I came from Massachusetts. Was born and raised on a seacoast in New Hampshire, and we had a dress code on the beach. If a man went into the town of Hampton away from the beach without a shirt on, he'd be fined $25. It was very strict, and even a woman that's breastfeeding would be asked to cover up in a restaurant. There's just proper, modest, when you're in public, it's just the way it is. And when we came to Pella, I thought Pella was heaven on earth. I had never seen a town like Pella. I've got to get checked up here. Massachusetts became extremely liberal, and they let things slide. You have a great responsibility to the public not to let things slide on this. Because I saw the community that I raised my children in, that was farmland community, a beautiful place, turn into gay parades, lots of clubs, because once, one immoral action of indecent exposure comes through, then comes the next thing, and the next, and if you, if you don't stand firm on this, it lets the community slide. I saw nice downtown, nice stores close, because people did not want to walk downtown with this stuff. It's immoral. I'm not saying that the community is, and the identity is, but it's not the clean moral living that God intended. And this country was founded as a Christian nation, and was still under God. And so, we have a moral value to, a moral respect to the Lord on this. And I'm just here to say, please, please don't like Pella. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Paulina Mena. I'm an associate professor of biology at Central College, and I wanted to speak to you, and thank you for your decision to uphold the law, because really, that's what it's about. It's about the law. The law is made to not discriminate against individuals, and was decided not by people here, it was decided by people making laws, and you guys decided to side with that, and I appreciate that. And it makes me hopeful that, you know, people growing up here will be non-discriminated against, in spite of what you hear here. And I needed to come here to say this, because I have a daughter, I'm taking away time from my, from my three-year-old daughter, because I'm, I think that's a good precedent for her, whatever she is going to grow up to be, she will not be discriminated against, because you guys are holding the law. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Mary Ellen Butler. I live at 406 Franklin Street. My husband and I moved to Pella in March of this year, and we have loved Pella. And I was very happy when our family from Colorado came to visit in June, and that includes our grandson, who is 14, and our granddaughter, who's 12, and they visited the pool, and I was so happy to send them to such a beautiful facility. I'm very glad they weren't there on either of the days of the incidents. If I had known that they would have, might have been exposed to that, those kinds of incidents, I wouldn't have allowed them to go. That's my choice. And I think you have a responsibility to protect the citizens of Pella. And so, maybe, you know, if you're going to allow that kind of behavior at the pool, a sign should be put outside, warning people, or informing people that these things are allowed, so they can make their choice before they go in as to whether or not they want You have a lot of regulations in this town, and some of them are like the Dutch architecture. It's wonderful, and it makes Pella special, and I think you need to protect the citizens and especially the children. And if you need to put up a sign, warning, or informing people of what is allowed in the pool, you should do that.
Thank you.
I live on 201 Broadway Street. We've been here six years now. First of all, I don't remember who it was, but I want to thank one of you. The last time I was here, you mentioned that some of the young adults that were at the pool that were using foul language were asked to leave, and I commend you for that. We, my husband and I, I tell you where we live, but to tell you a little more about us, we lived on the, we came, after we were married, we came to know Christ. And eight years later, Lord blessed us with two children that we endeavored to raise with a grateful attitude for what had been done for us, and so, we expected certain things out of their behavior. And I do want to say that if someone came to us with, that the kids had been doing something wrong like that, we were thankful that people came to us and told us that our children were misbehaving, or even if another adult, even if another adult corrected them, we endeavored to be thankful for that. So, I, I should have said that last time, but I'm not quick on my feet sometimes, but thank you for, and the other thing that I just want to say too is, I worked in a state ski area for 48 years. I always say I started when I was five, but anyway. I worked in the ski school, and it started off kind of, well, it was a large ski area at the time, but by the way, to my left, it was very large. The ski school alone had 200 employees, and I ended up being in a supervisory position by the end of my years there, several years there. And I, I'm not telling you anything most of you don't know. You're all, well, maybe not close to my age, but we're in the kind of same age bracket, and, and what was hugely important in that supervisory position was that I knew that whoever my boss was, whoever was standing behind me, had my back. And I think that you, or people that have preceded you, have endeavored to do that, it very much appears at the pool, or in probably a lot of places in town, that you, you had their back. So, when there's a, when there's a, not opportunity, but when you have to possibly confront a situation that you can't avoid, you know that, that somebody's going to be standing behind you, and we had, we had wonderful bosses and people that stood behind us in that way. But the other thing that was hugely important and was helpful was that the guidelines that were, that we set out were fairly specific. We knew what they were, so that we weren't going to step out onto thin ice. We kind of knew that, okay, here's the rules, and when we go out there and have to confront a situation with the public, we were going to be okay, as long as we were doing it in an appropriate way. So, I guess I too, like Michelle, just want to say, the more specific you can be, the better for your employees to be able to follow through when they're, when they're in. And that's not a fun position to be in sometimes. You don't want to confront people, you don't want to take that on, so, but, so, thanks for your time, and thanks for what you do, and working on this, and thank you.
I'm Brenda Vanmark, and I live 1200 Franklin Street. I know, I was not planning to come up here and talk. There's a couple things that just kind of hit me that I feel like I have to address. Number one, I don't think of this as a transgender issue. We just want people to cover up their body parts, you know? So, for them to come up and act like we're discriminating against them because we want them to cover their body parts? No, we just kind of like the same rules for everybody. If you have breasts, mammary glands, whatever they're called, they need to be covered at the public pool. I don't think that's too much to ask. I think it should be very specifically said in the, you know, in their rules, that not, I think you're just being too vague, and it needs to be very specific what body parts have to be covered, period, and that clears it up. There's never any trouble in the future with it. So, that's really all I had to say. Oh, one other thing, while I'm here, I have a friend that used to live in Pella, she now lives in California, and she was telling me, I used to go to Balboa Park, kind of a beach area, very nice, and restaurants you could go to. She said, Brenda, I'm telling you what, it's a slippery slope. We used to go there, it was wonderful. You'd have pectics and stuff, down you go, needles all over the place, people publicly, on blankets, totally nude, having sex, right there for everyone to see. Little kids have to go past this place to go to the museums there, schoolchildren. This is what they get to look at. I don't think we want that. I know that sounds extreme, but I guarantee you, it did start that way, you know? It's a slippery slope, so just, you know, nip to the butt.
Okay, seeing no one else approaching our...
I've got a quick question about the refunds.
Yep.
Some people are wondering where that's at, what's the status on that?
I don't know, I saw in our, I saw in our bill, in our bill pays, we issued a lot of them, so, we just approved the payment of a whole bunch of them tonight.
So, they're on their way then, that's good. Thanks. Didn't know, we hadn't heard anything, they were wondering.
All entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Man's for four, all in favor, please say yes, opposed, no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Yes.
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 We are adjourned.